Good day. I am Dennis Doster. I have served Guilford as a volunteer on the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Zoning Board of Appeals for over 25 years. I am presently chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals. In my discussion with various citizens of Guilford, I have found many misunderstandings of how Guilford government works. This is the first in a series of interviews with town of Guilford officials describing the functioning of the town government. Boards and commissions consisting of citizen volunteers who work without pay do most of the guiding of the town through all of the essential processes. Of the principal boards and commissions, only the Board of Selectmen receives pay. Each board and commission is granted power by the state to regulate its particular sphere of influence. State law defines and limits these powers. We are not going to talk much about state law. We are going to talk to persons who work with these boards and commissions to see how they function in practice. Stay tuned. Welcome to our first interview. Today, we will be discussing the Planning and Zoning Commission with our Guilford town planner, George Crawl. In our town, both planning and zoning are included in the same commission. And the commission consists of seven regular members and alternates, and the commission elects its own chairman. According to the town charter, four members are of the same party as the first selectman, and three are from the other party. In practical application, the individuals vote as they choose, and votes rarely split along party lines. We will talk more about how members are selected near the end of our interview. But George, what is your role as town planner?
Thank you, Dennis. I've been the town planner in Guilford since 1984. The role of the town planner is to provide advice to the Planning and Zoning Commission primarily with regard to the administration of its duties. So I provide professional planning advice to the Planning and Zoning Commission and also to other public officials in the town who have questions or issues related to planning or development associated with activities of the town.
Planning, development in Guilford begins with a document called the Plan of Conservation and Development. George, what is this plan, and where does it come from?
The Plan of Conservation and Development is a document that's written by the Planning and Zoning Commission with professional advice. It describes the future of the town in terms of the type of development that the authors of the plan consider to be desirable for the town. It identifies areas in the town where various kinds of development should occur: residential development, commercial, industrial, and so forth. It describes areas to be preserved, environmental areas, areas of conservation, and so forth. And it's the guiding principle, if you will, in qualitative terms, for the development of zoning regulations and the other law that the town creates, which regulates land use and land development and community development. It has to be approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission and also by the Board of Selectmen in order for it to become official. It's meant to be revised at least every 10 years. Connecticut law requires that it be revised every 10 years. In Guilford's case, it's not one document. It's really a series of documents. The plan, in its broadest sense, concerns itself with the entire geographic area of the town. And then there are various supplements to it, and either geographically specific subplans, if you will, or subject matter specific subplans. For example, there's an economic development plan. There's a plan for Route 1 West. There's a plan for the coastal area of the town. All of these are part and parcel of the Plan of Conservation and Development. And I said I mentioned before, it is approved. All these documents and planning visions are approved by both the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Board of Selectmen.
And does the public get input on this?
Absolutely. The plans, as they're developed individually, usually are developed by a committee of citizens appointed by the Planning and Zoning Commission and/or the Board of Selectmen. I can best sort of describe that by example. If the plan has a geographic focus, like the Route 1 West Plan, for example, or the Town Center South Plan, we would include residents and property owners from those areas in the study committee that creates the plan. The Planning and Zoning Commission is also required, once the planning document is created, to hold public hearings, which they do, to invite public input. So there is quite extensive and robust public input into the creation of these plans.
Okay. And how do you know which... The planning takes place over a period of time. How do you know how to pace it, or how to decide which area of the plan you're going to do next?
Well, the timeframe encompassed in each plan, to some extent, revolves around this 10-year interval that I mentioned, although that's not quite as important. The determination as to what kinds of subjects are going to be addressed in a particular planning project is really a function, I think, of issues that arise in the town, and where the citizens of town, where residents and property owners feel areas that need attention, areas where there's development pressure, for example, might be an area that would be subject to a planning study. Also, sort of outside forces may determine what kind of areas get addressed. A good example is the so-called Town Center South Plan, which focuses on the area around the train station. As the Shoreline East train service was being implemented in Guilford over the last 10 years or so, that became a place where we felt we needed to focus some planning thought because of the availability of this new service. So it led to ideas about creating a plan that focused on the development around the train station. So it really depends on circumstances, either issues that arise within the town itself, or perhaps sort of forces beyond the town might suggest things that we need to focus on. Right now, for example, as I mentioned, a planning study is underway dealing with the area that we call Route 1 West, which is a focus on potentially commercial development along Route 1 between Branford and Exit 57. So from time to time, issues arise, and the Planning and Zoning Commission feels it's necessary to address either a geographic area or a subject area.
And you say the Planning and Zoning Commission feels that. How does this...specifically, how would they...
Does it manifest itself? Normally, what happens is that, you know, the commission probably throughout its normal deliberations on a day-to-day basis or week-to-week basis identifies the subject that needs attention. What they would typically do is ask their staff, myself, and other members of our staff to come up with ideas. If they feel a full-blown study is necessary, then they ask the staff directed by me to create a process or a scope of work that might deal with the particular area at hand. So the Planning and Zoning Commission sets the broad agenda for what's supposed to happen. They direct their staff to implement that agenda to the best of our abilities.
Okay. Now, how can people in our audience obtain a copy of this plan?
The best way is to go to the town website and go to the Town Documents section on the town website, and they can see the original plan, or the plan that were...the base plan, if you will, that we're working on right...that we're working from right now, which was approved in 2002. And they can also see all the various other plans. There's probably six or eight of them since 2002 that have been developed. They're all available on the town website, so that's the easiest place to see them. They're also at the library, and we have copies at Town Hall South, where the Planning and Zoning Office is located. So any of those places are a good place to see the actual physical product.
Okay. And for just general information, Town Hall South is the old police station.
What used to be the police station, right?
Yeah, that's near Town Hall, but...
Right. That's the office where the Building Department, the Health Department, Engineering Department, all the various agencies, the town that deal with development and land use are located. And we're open 8:30 to 4:30, Monday through Friday, so the public is invited to stop in and see us.
Great. Now, planning includes approval of subdivision applications. Any division of a parcel of land into three or more parts for sale or development is a subdivision. What does the commission consider when reviewing and approving subdivisions?
That's a good question, Dennis. Normally, when we think of a subdivision, we think of, in Guilford's case at least, the subdivision of parcels of land for the purpose of residential development, building houses. So when an owner of property wants to, or thinks that they can create one or more lots from the parcel of land that they own, as you mentioned, three lots is a minimum requirement that triggers the so-called subdivision plan review. That person creates a subdivision plan, which has to be approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. The subdivision plan creates lots that are made pursuant to another document of the town, a legal document called the zoning code. The zoning code, in the case, for example, of residential lots, describes the minimum dimensions of the lot, describes the density of development that can occur, describes the setback requirements for houses on those lots. And in Guilford's case, we have eight different residential zones that the residentially-zoned area of the town is divided into, and each of these zones has different minimum lot-size standards, minimum setback standards, coverage, density standards, and other characteristics. So when you're creating a subdivision plan, the lots that you create have to conform to those standards, to those zoning standards that apply in that particular zone. So the subdivision review process that the Planning and Zoning Commission goes through and the zoning administration process are kind of work hand-in-hand with regard to subdivision applications. In Guilford's case, over the years, we've approved many, many subdivisions. Most of our viewers probably live in a house that's built pursuant to a subdivision that was probably built in the '60s, '70s, '80s, or '90s. In the last few years, there have been not as many subdivision lots created, but it's been a very active part of the Planning and Zoning Commission's business over the years, for sure.
Do subdivisions have to be held up to a public hearing?
No. It's important...a planning and zoning process involves the administration of these rules and regulations through the submission of plans to the Planning and Zoning Commission, which are reviewed in a public meeting by the Planning and Zoning Commission. And depending on the type of application, Connecticut law prescribes that certain types of applications have a public hearing, and other types of applications do not have to have a public hearing. So in the case of a subdivision of land, Connecticut law does not require a public hearing, as distinguished from a public meeting. All of this activity takes place in a public meeting. A public hearing is a little bit different in that there is a specific notice required of the fact that the application is going to be considered. There's legal notices published in the newspaper. In Guilford's case, for public hearings, there's also notification of adjoining property owners, the fact that there's a subdivision. And the public hearing is conducted slightly differently than the regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. But subdivisions, under Connecticut law, do not require a public hearing. The Planning and Zoning Commission can hold a public hearing on any type of application it wants to, even if it's not required, and they do that from time to time. But in terms of subdivisions, it's not a public hearing. There's no public hearing requirement.
What other kinds of...other than what we've talked about so far, are there other types of planning that the Planning and Zoning Commission does?
You asked, is there other type of planning? The Planning and Zoning Commission's primary planning function is exercised through the Plan of Conservation and Development. I mean, the town does other types of planning, usually administered through the...under the auspices of the Board of Selectmen, for example, capital improvements planning, roadway planning, public facilities planning. That's not typically under the direct responsibility of the Planning and Zoning Commission, but more likely under the department of the town that's carrying out that particular function or activity. Again, for example, one of the major responsibilities of the town is the development of roads. That's done under the Engineering Department of the town, under the auspices of the Board of Selectmen. Parks and Recreation Facilities are developed under the auspices of the Park and Recreation Commission, schools under the Board of Ed, and so forth. So those aren't directly the responsibility of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay. And so the Board of Selectmen sort of does an overview of all of this different kind of planning happening in these different places, if that's right?
Yes, yeah, I would say so. One of the...that is...it is also the Board of Selectmen's responsibility to, along with the Planning and Zoning Commission, author and approve the Plan of Conservation and Development. Ideally, the Plan of Conservation and Development would include the facilities planning as well, that's carried out by these other departments that I just mentioned. So the Plan of Conservation and Development should include those activities as well.
Our audience has just seen an explanation of zoning responsibilities. Now, I think we've discussed so far why zoning is important, particularly when it comes to subdivisions. We talked about how subdivisions must conform to the zoning rules. Are there any other reasons why we have zoning, other than just for subdivisions?
Well, let me back up a little bit and talk about exactly what zoning is, and try to structure this in a way so that the listener who doesn't know anything about this area can kind of see the chain of responsibilities, if you will. In terms of zoning, and also in terms of the other so-called police powers that the town has, we are subject to what the state tells local governments we're able to do. So state law enables local governments in Connecticut to create zoning commissions or planning and zoning commissions, and enables local governments through these planning and zoning commissions to create zoning laws. And the extent of the zoning law and the types of authority that the zoning law can have, as well as the process of administering zoning, is prescribed by the state. So the state tells us we can create a zoning regulation, or a zoning code, which we have, which regulates what property owners can do with their property, in terms of, most importantly, what kinds of so-called uses you can perform or carry out on your property. And also, the zoning code includes standards and criteria for how, for lack of a better word, perhaps intense that activity can be. So, for example, in very simple terms, as I've mentioned before, we divide up the 50 square miles of the town of Guilford into a series of zones. I mentioned there's eight different residential zones. Within each zone, the intensity of development is different, ranging from more intense, meaning more density usually, to less intense, like in the most rural areas of the town. We also include, within our zoning jurisdiction or our zoning map, commercial zones and industrial zones. And then there's a series of kind of overlays zones, which kind of overlap these other land use zones, which I just described, which we won't get into right now. So that the town of Guilford is divided into residential, commercial, and industrial zones. Within each of these zones, especially now the commercial-industrial zones, there are different activities that property owners are allowed to conduct. In industrial zones, as the name might suggest, you can do manufacturing, you can do warehouses, you can do things that you might associate with an industrial area. The commercial zones are places where you can develop stores, you can develop restaurants, gas stations, offices, and similar types of commercial uses. In the case of Guilford, we have, I'm not even sure exactly the number, but eight or 10 different commercial zones. Each of them allows for a slightly different mix of types of commercial uses that are allowed. We have two different industrial zones, which allow for slightly different types of industrial uses that are allowed. And the Planning and Zoning Commission administers that zoning code by requiring, when property owners want to develop one of these uses that's allowed, to present...they're required to present a plan, usually called a site plan, which depicts, from an engineering and kind of architectural point of view, what it is they want to do, and also describes the use. And in this site plan, it shows the number of parking spaces, the size of the buildings that are going to be created, the distance between the building and the surrounding property owners, the number of square feet of the building, the setbacks from the property lines, and the landscaping that might be required, the type of architecture that would be employed in the building. And all of that's reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission under the auspices of what's called site plan review. And then the commission, if it determines that the use and the proposed activity conforms to this zoning code, then the commission approves it. If they determine that it doesn't conform, then they either approve it with certain conditions, that the plan be modified, or if it's particularly egregious, they would deny the application. And that's the way that the Planning and Zoning Commission administers the zoning code. The site plan is in many ways sort of similar to the subdivision plan. The subdivision plan pertaining to the division of property in a residential zone in order to build houses, the site plan being the application process that depicts what the property owner, the developer, wants to do in a commercial or industrial zone. It's a little bit confusing, but hopefully not too confusing.
There's a lot of information there. Yeah, but that pretty much...that does explain it. We have a zoning map in town, which shows where the zones, one are the most densely populated. How was that determined? How was that original zoning map made?
Well, that's a very good question. Zoning was originally created in Guilford in the mid-1950s, and a zoning map was created in 1950. I wasn't working here then, but I'm familiar with what the authors of the zoning code did. At that point, it was, as you might imagine, it was much less complicated than today. The authors of that plan created the basic kind of outline or structure for the development of the town, at least from 1950 onward. Of course, Guilford had a long history, about 300 years of history, actually, prior to the creation of zoning, which set forth a lot of the kind of skeleton for the way the town was going to be developed. But from 1639 onward, land development occurred, residential development tended to occur further away from the center of the town. You know, the center of the town, of course, was established a long time ago, and the zoning map has kind of evolved since then. Probably the basic kind of forces that affect, you know, the creation of the plan revolve around things like access and infrastructure. You know, the highways and the railroad and the other transportation infrastructure tended to be concentrated in the center, what we now think of as the center of town. And around those highways tended to be higher-density development, tended to have commercial development. The further you got away from those highways, the more rural the town was, the more residential it is now. So essentially, I think you're building on infrastructure, you're building on history. You know, you're not changing radically from one historical period to another. All this sort of evolves slowly. Clearly, in the case of development, real estate in America, private property, the rights of private property owners, the private market for real estate development is a huge force that drives land development. And all of those factors kind of work together to create what ultimately becomes the zoning map and the whole zoning process.
And what's the public's influence on all of this? Zoning, creating some of the zoning and zoning changes?
I mean, there's several different publics that we deal with, of course. On the one hand, you have property owners and developers and businesses who want to do things with their property. So that's sort of...that's one public that we deal with. The other public that is a very important part of the whole land development process are the neighbors who are immediately affected by any particular development. That's probably what we mostly think about when we think of the public. We think of somebody proposing to do something, and then the neighbors in the immediate vicinity who feel like they're going to be affected by that development. They become the most vocal part of that public. They become the most interested part of the planning process. And then there's the sort of larger public, which is perhaps, you know, the whole community of the town, who are in some ways perhaps affected by a particular development or planning decision, but aren't affected as much as the immediate neighbors to the project, and probably aren't as affected as much as the person who's actually doing the project. So you have these sort of levels of public involvement. In the case of Guilford, I think the public participation in the whole land development process is extensive. And we try to provide as much opportunity as possible for the public to have its say, so to speak, in these decisions that are made by the Planning and Zoning Commission. We do operate under the rule of law, which describes, you know, what property owners can do and what they can't do, what the rules are. And property owners, neighbors, and everyone else expects that the rule of law will prevail, and that the rule of law both governs both the zoning itself and what kinds of things are allowed, but also the rule of law governs the process that you have to follow in making the decision. So all of those things affect what the public can do, what role the public can play in the decision-making process, but it's quite extensive. The public also has opportunity to affect the land development decision-making process through the courts of Connecticut. Depending on your relationship to a particular decision, you may have grounds or rights or authority to appeal a particular decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission if you feel aggrieved by the decision that they make. The way you do that is to appeal to Connecticut courts. The applicant for a particular application always has standing to appeal. If you deny something that they feel...that the applicant feels should have been approved, they have the right to go to court. Neighbors, in most circumstances, also have standing to appeal a decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission. If an application is approved next to your property and you think it shouldn't have been approved, you have the right to appeal to court. So there is a whole range of opportunities, if you will, for the public, quote-unquote, depending on which public we're talking about, to intervene and to be involved in the planning and zoning process.
Now, there is a project right now, which has definitely gotten a lot of people excited over the last year or so, and that is the propane...
Yes.
...project. And it's now being proposed out on Boston Post Road West.
Yes.
And explain to our audience how this project came to be.
Sure. Sure.
And what is the prospect or the outlook for it?
Well, with regard to the outlook for it, I hesitate to wade into that area. But, the issue around, issues around propane storage in Guilford illustrate a lot of what we've just been talking about. A lot of the both substantive and process elements that relate to land use decision-making. We can start with where this issue originally began, which was one of our local businesses wanted to create a propane storage facility on their property. They're currently in the oil business, the heating oil business. They have expanded into the propane business, and they wanted to develop bulk storage, so-called bulk storage of propane on their property. It was not clear, this is a property that is in a commercial zone. This is a business that's been there for many, many years. So, it's in a zone that allows a wide variety of types of commercial uses. The zone allows oil storage, heating oil storage, and the activity that's associated with heating oil, which is the business that's conducted there now. The owners of the business thought that propane storage was analogous to, or encompassed within the definition of the zoning code definition of fuel oil and fuel oil storage, which is the business that they were conducting now. They went through a lengthy process of public hearings with the Planning and Zoning Commission to review their proposed plan to create propane storage. The Planning and Zoning Commission, after a great deal of deliberation and a substantial amount of expert testimony from lots of experts about propane, determined that propane storage was not allowed in that zone, and therefore, they denied the application for propane storage on that property. That whole project illustrated a lot about the way zoning works. The public involvement, especially the immediate neighbors, was extensive. The immediate neighbors organized a highly effective set of arguments and expert testimony, which was presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission, which, in the end, convinced the Planning and Zoning Commission that this activity, the propane storage, was not appropriate in that location, and it was not to be permitted within that location. The applicant, the property owner at that time, has appealed that decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Appealed to?
Appealed to the Superior Court of Connecticut. So, that issue is currently in the courts right now, as we speak. Subsequent to that, the same business identified another property that they thought might be appropriate for propane storage in Guilford, actually out on the area that we called Route One West, I talked about before, and proposed to develop propane storage there. And they submitted an amendment to the zoning code, which the Planning and Zoning Commission approved, which would allow, under certain circumstances, the storage of propane in that particular zone in Route One West. One of the things that I didn't talk about specifically before, which is, this illustrates, is that any person can petition the Planning and Zoning Commission to amend the zoning code. It's not just something that has to be initiated by the Planning and Zoning Commission. So, any property owner, any resident, any citizen of Guilford can petition the Planning and Zoning Commission to change the zoning code, either with respect to their own property, or with respect to really any aspect of the code. That's what happened here. The business petitioned the commission to amend the code. They had a public hearing, and subsequent to the public hearing, they approved the change in the zoning code itself, which would allow propane storage, under certain circumstances, and by special permit, in this particular zone at Route One West. So, I've introduced a new term here, which is really important in this case, and it's also important in the whole context of zoning, and that's the term, a special permit. I talked before about a zoning code indicating things that were usually allowed or not allowed in particular zones. Another type of use allowance in any type of zone is the use that's allowed only by special permit. The special permit use is one in which a higher level of review or scrutiny is required by the Planning and Zoning Commission. And, the special permit use also triggers an automatic requirement for a public hearing, and also gives the Planning and Zoning Commission more discretion as to whether they can approve the application or not, and also more authority with regard to approving it with conditions. So, the propane storage was allowed in this new zone by special permit. And that's actually where the project stands right now. As of today, there is no application yet to planning and zoning to develop propane storage in this zone on Route One West, although there is an application that's currently pending before the Inland Wetlands Commission, which is an aspect of land use regulation we haven't talked about yet. But, there is an application to develop propane storage before the Inland Wetlands Commission, but not yet an application, a special permit application for planning and zoning.
We'll talk about Inland Wetlands another day.
Right.
How is it the public knows when these special permit hearings occur?
Special permits, by law, require that the applicant, the property owner, notify by registered mail adjoining property owners, according to the list of property owners that's in the town records. So, adjoining property owners mean any property owner that actually abuts the subject site of the property, and also any property owners across, where they would be across the street from the subject site. So, the applicant has to notify the property owner by public notice, or by registered mail, at least 15 days prior to an application. Also, in the case of special permits in Guilford, you have to put up a sign on the property, which is a sign that the Planning and Zoning Commission provides, which is about a three-by, two-by-three sign that says there's an application pending, and gives the date of the application's public hearing. And that has to also be posted on the property 15 days prior. And then, there's also legal notice published in the newspaper. In this case, we publish our legal notices in the Courier, that also identifies the fact that there's going to be an application heard at a public hearing. So, there's those three types of notice given for special permit applications.
Okay, so, but you have to pay attention to know that one is coming up.
Well, if you're an adjoining property owner, you will get the notice in the mail. And if you're nearby, you may or may not, of course, see the sign. Very few people read the public hearing notices in the paper, I'm aware of that.
But, it's a good idea, isn't it?
But, yeah. Pay attention to the local news if you're concerned about these things, yes.
Now, I saw the other night that you had proposed a change in hearing for a zone change, that you suggested that there be two, a hearing, then a continuation of that hearing.
Right.
Why?
I think probably, perhaps because of the reason you were hinting at just a few moments ago. People are very busy, you know, even if they get a notice, even if they get a registered something in the mail, maybe they haven't looked at it, maybe it got buried in all the junk mail that we get. For whatever reason, where there's something as important as an application that requires a public hearing, the zoning committee of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I could talk about the zoning committee in a minute, actually proposed that, in order to make sure that the public is as informed and has as much opportunity as possible to participate in these public hearings, proposed an amendment to the zoning code, which would require that on any application to amend the zoning code or the zoning map, that in effect, at least two public hearings be held. Both the initial public hearing, which is required by law, and also, in effect, continue that public hearing to at least one other meeting after the initial public hearing. So, that way, if there's an application that, for whatever reason, doesn't generate the public interest that maybe is warranted, there's always an opportunity for the interested public to come to the next meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and that would be an automatic requirement, if the zoning amendment is approved, that there be a second public hearing for any application that is either an amendment to the zoning code, or an amendment to the zoning map.
Yeah, and that would give an opportunity for discussion in the neighborhood to circulate around a little bit to the people that hadn't been quite aware.
If they weren't aware of it prior to the first public hearing, correct. Yes.
Is the commission subject to outside influence in either initiating or granting zone changes or special permits? What does the law say about that?
The law says that once an application is submitted and received by the Planning and Zoning Commission, they are prohibited from engaging, the commission members are prohibited from engaging in any so-called ex parte communications, or considering any evidence, if you will, or information about that particular application that isn't part of the public hearing record. So, the answer to your question is no. Once an application has been submitted, the commission is required to, is only permitted to consider evidence, testimony, and information that's presented at a public hearing. Now, you know, of course, you know, the commission members are human beings, you know, they engage in social activities, and so, they may be approached by people from time to time during the course of a public hearing, for example, especially if it's something highly controversial, where the hearings continue for many weeks. They may be approached by people, their friends, their spouses, their children, or others might say, you know, "Shouldn't you be considering this? Shouldn't you do this? Shouldn't you think this way?" And their obligation is to first tell that person, "I'm not allowed to discuss this, because we have a public hearing pending." And their obligation is to be, to only consider evidence and facts, at least, that are presented at a public hearing.
I was on the Planning and Zoning Commission for 17 years, and all that time, I never received pressure, undue pressure, from anyone else in the political situation in town. I would occasionally get calls at home from citizens who were concerned, and I would tell them what you just told me. So, that's the way we do things here in town. Now, are there any other responsibilities of planning and zoning you think we should know about that we haven't already discussed?
I'm sure there are things that I haven't thought of. It is quite a thankless job, I have to say. I mean, you probably know that better than I do. It's not one that wins you many friends, and it's a job that is, requires a lot of careful thought and attention. It's a very important job in a town like Guilford, where development, real estate development, community development is a very important part of the issues that a town's dealing with. The commission meets twice a month. They have subcommittees who deal with various aspects of their job from time to time. It's one that requires quite a bit of time commitment. I think the vast majority of it is spent in the areas that we've talked about, especially, you know, when there's a controversial application. It's quite a time-consuming bit of business for the commission members. So, that's enough for them to do, I believe.
I just want to remind our audience, too, that the town is run by boards and commissions. Most of the people who work on these boards and commissions are volunteers. They get paid nothing. And it's a hard job, particularly when you have to sit there sometimes until midnight or later before a very hostile audience, who's very concerned about some particular issue, and very angry about it. So, it can get to be pretty heated.
I have to say, there are three, I think at least three vacancies right now on the Planning and Zoning Commission. So, if any of our viewers are interested, they should follow up with their respective political town committees, or with the Board of Selectmen, and express interest in these jobs. We do, the current commission, over the last several years, has a pretty hard and fast rule, that they will not take any meeting beyond 10:30 or 11 o'clock at night, knowing that by that time, people are probably not 100% focused, and it's a little bit unfair to everybody to make the meetings go on that late, so.
I know we had a few in the 90s that went on late.
Right, and I think we learned the lesson from that, from those times, I think.
And if you wish to serve, yes. Go to your, if you are a Republican, go to your Republican town committee, or a Democrat, go to your Democratic town committee, and tell a representative that you want to serve on one of these boards. We desperately and always need people who are civic-minded, who will get up and help out the town by serving on one of these boards. Now, in another show, we will discuss how a property owner can get an exception to the zoning board of appeals by applying to the zoning regulations, by applying to another board, the zoning board of appeals. So, until then, goodbye for now.